Good evening, I'd like to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order on this August 6th, 2019. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Allen to open us with an invocation.
Thank you Chairman, would you all please bow your heads? Your Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening in your sight to do the business of the people of this great county. We ask that you be with us in our words and actions tonight and they all be in line with your vision of what you wish us to be. Give thanks for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us to live in this great nation and this wonderful community. Thank you for all those that make that possible, for the people who work hard for the citizens every day. Especially ask that you be with the first responders who run into the emergencies rather than away from them. In that vein, we ask that you be with families of those who have recently been the victims of tragedies in Passo in Ohio. Ask that you comfort them, work with through your ways to keep their families in your sight. We ask all these things in your name.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the record show that we have a full quorum here for this meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting of July 16th in your package. If you give your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. As far as the agenda, Mr. Johnson, we have one item to add, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, item I-3A will be purchase of Dodge charges off the state contract for the sheriff's office.
Okay, consider that added. Again, we just want to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners meeting and as we sit here, we're wondering why we meet every two weeks and we haven't seen you before. So, you're welcome, we're here every time. I'd like to again thank all the folks for coming out and we have a Boy Scout here. I'd like if you'd just stand up and tell us your name and the school you attend and if you're working for what kind of merit badge? Welcome. Again, under special recognitions, we have one for John Luton, I believe you're gonna lead this, John, are you here? With the recognition for our girls' 11 and 12 softball team. Come on up. Team Georgia.
And Stacy Usri too, back there. Thought you were hiding in the corner. But we just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to recognize Team Georgia, who is the Columbia County 11 and 12-year-old Dixie Girls All-Star Team. So, they made another really, really deep run through the state tournament and all the way to the championship game in the World Series. Came up just a little bit short, I do have some numbers here, at the state tournament, their first game over Manchester was a 23 to nothing win. Game two, Crawford County, 21 to 3. Is this football or softball? Crawford County, again, 11 to 1 to win the state. And then in the World Series, which was down in Alexandria, Louisiana, the first game was 16 to nothing and was a no-hitter. I think that was against the host, Indiana. Then the second game fell a tough, tough game to South Carolina, who eventually won it 5 to 6, that's a loss. But bounced back with two wins over Louisiana, 14 to nothing, and Florida, 9 to 3. Make it back to the championship where you had to beat South Carolina twice. And I understand ran into a pretty darn good pitcher in that game, who still had all our innings left, I think. Sounds like they saved them for you, so. But another good run, I believe a lot of y'all made a run to the World Series last year. And to my understanding, a lot of you might be back next year, is that right? So, one more chance, do it again, I think. And thank you for how you represented Columbia County, how you represented the Parks and Rec Department, and how you represented Georgia. So, we just wanted to get you here and recognize you tonight and everybody give you a round of applause. And we'll let Stacy, do you have anything to say? Stacy Usri. Stacy is our representative from Parks and Recreation who traveled with the team. What y'all did in Alexandria, Louisiana for a week, I do not know. Though I know y'all had some rain, which pushed things back, so. I'll hand it over to the coaches, and coaches, if y'all would just introduce yourselves and the players.
I'm Katrina Dent, one of the coaches.
Jonathan Counts, one of the coaches.
Don Story, one of the coaches.
By the way, I'm a Columbia County Sheriff's Office proud employee.
I'm Michaela White.
I'm Jalen Jenkins.
Gordon Count.
I'm Aubrey Dent.
Arlie Hoffman.
Kinsley Kirkland.
Willie Bridges.
Sam Story.
I'm Addison Long.
I'm Haley Shipman.
Paige Jarrett.
Avio Hillman.
How about a big hand for your Georgia State Champions? Y'all squeak, get a picture.
Y'all get tight.
Stand. Turn sideways a little bit. Well, next up, we have our team of the quarter, or better yet, the 2019 Team of Second Quarter, Fire and Rescue Engine Company 6. And I believe Chief Wallen is gonna step up and give that award. Captain Holberton submitted them and he is at the academy this week and he wanted you to know how proud he was, but he was not able to make it back. These are the firefighters and officers of Engine Company 6 on Weenview Parkway. Late last year, they decided to work together to add a new service to the county, from our perspective, and that was the valid safety seat inspection and training program. It's a wonderful program and they had to go through pretty intense training, worked together to train this, and now they've been running through almost 50 in just a couple of months. Children safer in traffic. So, this is your Team of the Quarter award.
Work extra.
Yeah, you have to work an extra shift a month? Eight hours of PTO, and we already gave you breakfast, so. But if you want to, tell them who you are.
I'm Terry Wright.
I'm James Thomas.
I'm Rory Hanson.
Mike Proznett.
Danger Pit.
Well, I'm proud of y'all, I'm very, very proud of you, very in honor, thank you for what you've been and there's your sign. Chief Wallen, you might as well stay up here. The next item on our agenda deals with the Fire and Rescue Boot Drive. And a lot of folks may not know, but the firemen go out and stand in the heat in their uniforms with boots raising money for charity. It's a fantastic effort, and the first time I got on the commission, I was shocked at the amount of money they raised doing so. So, I'm gonna let you go ahead and proceed with this part of the meeting. Well, first, I'd like to get Tika and who you have representing Community Connections to come up. Y'all collected it, come on up. For six days, we stand out in the community and raise funds that go between two local organizations, the first being Columbia County Community Connections. And I'd like to present... Yeah, you're fine. As long as you're not taller than me. Almost did. It is $36,802. All of these guys have stood out there and did incredible things you do. Our pleasure to be here.
We are so incredibly thankful. We brought some Dream Academy campers, some after-school, some grandparents and parents along, just to say thank you. Without your support, we could not do this program. You all afford us enough money that we can provide after-school for about 45 kids at a hundred dollars a week. So, your money means something to this community, thank you all so very much.
Y'all got to slide in.
Come on, guys, come on. He's in crack.
Keep going.
All the way around.
All the way around.
Come on now.
Analyze a burning building, but they can't analyze.
They can't stand in line.
Oh, yes, yes, that is it. We have Alicia from this Southeastern Firefighters Burn Foundation. Burn Foundation of America. Would also like to present you $36,570. Fighters. Us to pass on. So much for all.
Hi, guys, thank you so much to the commissioners as well, I don't think you realize how awesome your fire department is.
No, we do.
Every year, every year, we of course have the largest burn center in the country. And so, every year, we have so many people come into our community. And the thing that we hear over and over again is how warm and welcoming our counties are. And so, and that has a lot to do with our boot drives and just the hospitality we're able to show all these families that do come from all over the country. Last year alone, we had 1,524 individual people stay in our lodging facility. And this boot drive, these boot drive funds go directly towards helping patients and families. We had over 75 people from the Columbia County area that needed assistance because of burns and wounds just last year alone. So, again, your funds help go directly towards this and we are greatly, greatly appreciative of all that y'all do. And again, to the commissioners and of course to the fire department and the firefighters who do so much for us and stand out for six days and all with a smile. Thank y'all again.
Well, guys, one more time.
Come on, some people on the left.
Even an Augustine College graduate can do that math, so they raised $72,000 in six days. Think about it. That's a lot of boots.
Forty-six pair or forty-six? Twenty-three pairs? About a bean. Okay, commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, all these items have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be put on the consent agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion, all signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Onto our debate agenda, I'll go to Commissioner.
I have several today. I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 1908, amending Chapter 54, Mobile Homes and Trailers, repealing any conflicting ordinance and to be effective the day after the second reading.
Yes, sir, this is a, our first ordinance of many that deal with the creation of tiny home districts. So, this first one here basically defines the tiny house and the community. It references mobile home park zoning, and follow along that. Defines the foundation requirements for these tiny homes. Develops some community standards, if you want to develop a community with these tiny homes, that's also in there. And it moves the authority to approve these tiny homes from planning to development standards.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 1909, amending Chapter 90, zoning, Article 1, in general, Section 909. Definition, repealing any conflicting ordinance and to be effective the day after the second reading.
Second.
Well, this one, this is a change in the name and the definition of ancillary dwelling. All it did.
Add it back to the teeny homes.
It is.
Or tiny homes.
Tiny, teeny, either one.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 1910, amending Chapter 90, zoning, Article 2, residential districts, Section 9050, allowed uses, repealing any conflicting ordinance and to be effective the day after the second reading.
This updated our residential use table to show that these are limited use in R-A and R-4 districts.
They only go there.
Correct.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 19-11, amending Chapter 90, zoning, Article 2, residential districts, Section 90-52, ancillary or secondary residential structures, repealing any conflicting ordinance and to be effective the day after the second reading.
Another update of the ancillary dwelling definition goes on to say that a tiny house cannot be used as an ancillary dwelling. People can have ancillary dwellings, they just can't buy a tiny house and call it an ancillary.
They could, or somebody can live in it.
Correct.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 19-12, amending Chapter 90, zoning, Article 3, commercial, industrial, professional, special, planned unit development and planned development districts, Section 90-97, allowed uses, repealing any conflicting ordinance and to be effective the day after the second reading.
Second.
This is the update of our commercial use table, this is, use the use in S-1, but also separates RVs out from car sales, and the past RVs and cars was lumped together, separates those out.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 19-13, amending Chapter 90, zoning, Article 4, supplemental requirements, Section 90-147, use provisions, repealing any conflicting ordinance and to be effective the day after the second reading.
Second.
An update of the use tables, personal use tables, basically puts the definition of tiny house in that use tables and the use standard, so where it can be used.
Discussion? For point of reference, we're just trying to get ahead of this tiny home thing. If people come in and want to build tiny home subdivisions, a lot of times they're made somewhere else and then brought in, which is more like a trailer. So, the county just decided to get ahead of that and with the ordinances in place to be able to deal with it if somebody comes forward with a plan to do that. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you to the staff for working on that, that was a lot of work to button all that up.
Alius.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the first reading of Resolution 19-25, amending the fee schedule for the community events rental contract.
Did this establish, John, did you want to cover or you want me to? Okay. It establishes a $250 non-refundable staking fee that covers the time and labor associated with the efforts to coordinate the staking.
This is to prevent stakes going through water systems.
What we're trying to do is encourage them to use the water containers or the handbags to weigh. Staking, but in some cases, they have to use the staking, so if they do, this will be the route for them to do.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Allen.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 19-24 as presented and authorize the chairman to sign all required forms and documents. Second.
Where we're setting the tax rate for the year. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This year, the Board of Commissioners or the staff has put together a proposal using the rollback rate for millage. And basically what that means is because of the growth in our digest, we have the opportunity to either lower taxes or reappropriate the funds for the additional funds that come in. Based on the direction that I got from this board, we presented a rollback rate, which will set our millage rate next year at 5.999. First time that Columbia County's ever had a sub-six millage rate, which I think is, says a lot for our county. Certainly is a good thing anytime you can lower taxes. We also presented in your millage rate information, a couple of items as related to the debt service and the fire fee. As you know, we have, we levy three different millage rates, one for regular maintenance and operation, one for debt service countywide, and one for fire in the unincorporated area. Because our sales tax numbers are coming in so well, we're actually able to roll back the debt service millage rate for the 2016 bonds using additional sales tax dollars. So, everybody that buys something in the store is contributing to that, so we can actually lower our taxes with that money. And we're also gonna be able to roll back the 2017 bond that was, we were authorized to levy up to one mil for all the projects that we started doing last year. And we're able to roll that back, we're gonna roll that millage rate back to .89. We're actually gonna roll the 16 rate back to zero, so we won't need any additional funding for that, we'll be able to pay those off with the existing sales tax. What we're asking to do is to reappropriate that millage into the fire fund, because as you know, there's been a deficit in the fire fund. We've been supplementing that with insurance premium tax money. And that insurance premium tax money can be used for other things, it can be used for fire, but it can also be used for other things, the unincorporated area, to include roads, maintenance, sidewalks, those sort of things. So, we feel like that may be a better use of those funds. So, what we're asking to do is just to recap it, to reduce the MNO millage rate from 6.091 to 5.999. Reduce the 16 bond rate from .207 to zero. To reduce the 2017 bond rate from one mil to .89 mils. But the .317 mils that's generated on the debt service side, we're asking that we apply that to the fire service, which is gonna free up a little over a million dollars of IPTF money to be able to use, be able to use for transportation or other projects that we... So, the total millage rate for Columbia County is 9.447, which obviously is less than the 9.539 that it was last year.
So, it's gonna generate an extra million dollars for fire?
Correct.
That getting us to where we were trying to get a couple of years ago when we had a vision to move forward to get additional equipment for our guys, to put more guys on a truck, to... There's several different items that we were trying to accomplish.
We're continuing to work on that, in this particular case, it's almost a wash, because we're replacing IPTF money with tax dollars. If we decided to use the IPTF money in addition to that, and it was additional revenue, then obviously we could do that. We're working very diligently on that plan, we're way ahead of where we thought we would be at this time. You know, with our ISO rating of one, which is the absolute best that you can get, we want to make sure we maintain that. But the chief is working with us and we are very, very much on that path. I think as the digest continues to grow, we're gonna, we'll meet all those goals before we thought we would.
It was very creative on your part to move the money around like you did. It's been interesting that over the five budgets that I've been a part of, I guess this is the third time we've lowered the maintenance and operations budget, which run the government on, basically. The parks and the roads and bridges, and name the different parts. At any rate, so that continues to drop.
Well, even the sheriff's office, I mean, all of general government, all the
Right.
courts, everything, tax commissioner, all that's in there. Um, but I, I tell you, I got to give credit where credit's due and, and, uh, Ms. Reese, who couldn't be with us tonight, our internal services director, she does an outstanding job watching these numbers every single day. We work together diligently, uh, trying to go with this. I, I told her where I wanted to be and then she makes it happen, uh, so really she, she gets the credit. But our staff, we all work very hard on trying to keep taxes low in Columbia County.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of lowering taxes, raise your right hand? Hold on.
The media, why didn't anybody hear a report on that?
Good job. Mr. Johnson, can I ask one question? How many counties do you know that have, uh, sub-six?
So we benchmark ourselves against twelve other counties. When I say benchmark, there's counties of similar size, demographic, of, uh, general fund, budget amount, but we benchmark ourselves against twelve. Out of those twelve, uh, we, we use several different categories like the ISO rating and the bond ratings and everything. We lead in every single category of those twelve, of, of all the things we benchmark ourselves against, except for taxes. And there's one county that has a, a sub-five millage rate and that's Fayette County, but Fayette County has all the sales tax money from the movie studio that's in Fayette County. So they were able to roll their, they roll their, their property taxes back even further. So we're chasing them, but short of a movie studio, I don't know that we're going to catch them.
Fayette has municipalities of considerable size in it as well.
They do.
A large part of their citizen services.
They do, and those, those municipalities also levy a millage rate. So in our case, we do all the services, well, for the majority, we do ninety percent of the county, uh, and, and you're right. So the city of Fayetteville takes up a pretty good portion of, of Fayette County.
Against those, those, uh, the others in the group, we probably have more unincorporated
We do. We are, we are the largest unincorporated in the group.
That makes a difference. That's not apples to apples to that. I think we win in that category too, Scott.
Okay, well, we win in all of them.
Okay.
We win in all.
So it's good leadership, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malir.
My turn again. I make a motion to approve the rezoning request from RA to PRD for tax map oh-five-oh-oh-one-oh, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen planning commission report.
My second.
There's a PRD, it's about fifty acres, right at fifty acres, under sixty-three homes. Staff has worked with the, um, diner and the, uh, the owner, create what we think is a, a good layout. Uh, one of the big concerns, we did hear from the neighboring neighborhood, Misty Woods, or Misty Woods Drive, concerned about the connection of this neighborhood to their neighborhood. One of the conditions that you've, uh, heard mentioned now is that there will not be a connection to Misty Woods Drive. There will not be a, uh, actual physical connection between those two neighborhoods. Uh, however, there is a connection to Kalari, which is just south of this neighborhood. So there is internal connectivity to other neighborhoods, which is what we look for. Under sixty-three homes, I believe. Any questions?
Didn't, uh, isn't it going to be where it's not going to be connected to Misty Woods Drive, but it's going to be emergency access that somebody could get through if there was something in, on Misty Woods Drive and we needed to come in from this neighborhood, we could get there, is that correct?
Correct. So the, the right of way will actually go all the way to the property line, so that'll be county property. However, the condition is that the road is actually cul-de-sac prior to getting to Misty Woods Drive and the buffer, the landscape is installed. However, in the event we need emergency access, for some reason, something happens to the interest of Misty Woods Drive at, at High Meadows, very quickly, thirty minutes, we can go in there, get those trees out of the way, put some gravel down it and get people in and out of there if we have to, but it's not open to traffic on a daily basis.
That's a big thing to me, having connectivity in or out. Had a couple of incidents, things have happened, haven't been able to get people to their homes or out of there and looking at an option.
Any other comments or questions? All favor signify by raising your right hand? Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the minor PUD revision and change of condition for tax map zero-five-zero-seventeen-twenty-one, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen planning commission report.
Second.
This is a change in a condition that was required during the original concept review. There was a condition, they had to have a, a centralized green space, um, or in a town home section of the, of the neighborhood. They worked on it hard, they brought in several different, uh, revisions with, staff worked with them, they could not find one that worked. So this removes that condition of having that centrally located, uh, green space. Again, staff has looked at it, we're happy with the new plan they've laid out. I will go on to say that, uh, she, the motion was approved with conditions. There's a comment in here, not a condition, a comment requiring that road to be private. We're going to actually remove that comment and not require that road to be private, will be a public road, the county will maintain it once it's built to our standards.
Good. Questions? All favor raising your right hand? Carries.
I make a motion to approve the request for variances from section ninety dash ninety-eight, list of lot and structure requirements, ninety dash one-three-three parking and ninety dash one-three-nine buffer and screening for a portion of tax map zero-four-nine-zero-zero-eight-L, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen planning commission report.
Second.
This one here is a, is a piece of land that has got split zoning. It has got a M one, about a one acre of M one zoning in the corner, this parcel here. You have an existing building that is sitting there. Because the building was left vacant from operation for more than a year, is required to meet current standards to issue operating, uh, business license. We're brought, made aware of this when the, uh, document applied for a business license to run a cabinet shop out of there, to build cabinets. When that is inspected, it requires a lot of variances, so you got to have some setback variances. Um, there's also a request for a variance to not have paved parking, leave gravel parking, and, uh, no existing trees to be removed from the site without a landscape architect or an approved site plan to do so. Again, this is a cabinet shop, uh, some of the conditions that were placed on it by planning commission, where it's no retail sales, no counter sales, uh, basically they don't want this to be a drive-up place of business. They cleared us by the applicant that he intends on building cabinets there and delivering them to the houses that he builds them for. I believe the applicant is here if you have any further questions for him.
I'll go, I'll go over the conditions. I've read a couple of them.
Yep, so the setback variance applies only to the existing building on the site. So if he were to come in and tear this building down or add any additional buildings, those new buildings would be required to meet current code. This only applies to that existing building, that's the first one. Uh, the variance to retain the natural gravel parking service applies only to the cabinet shop business. So if something new comes in, they would have to either apply for new variance or pay the parking lot to meet current code. Um, and then no existing tree shall be removed from the site without approval of a landscaped architect. Then the one that was added, that, um, no signage allowed on the property, I forgot that one, I'm glad you asked me to go through it again. And then retail showroom or counter sales are prohibited. No drive-up showroom for people to come pick out cabinets. That'll all be done at the locations he simply builds here.
Uh, Mr. Schlotter, do you have an overhead of, uh, predominant zoning in this area?
All RA surrounded by, you can go back where you, where Patrice.
And what was the date of the zoning on that particular person?
I believe this zoning was back in the eighties, Will, do you remember? One, or it was, it's eighty-one or eighty-two, so it is
That was not funny, Will.
What did he say?
Older than me.
Nineteen eighty-one.
It's surrounded by RA, the one acre piece, M one, I believe it was, um, maybe some Avon sales in the past or
I believe it was Amway.
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 And the applicant is already using the property.
That was found out, yes, sir, uh, yes, ma'am, that when, um, planning commission was out doing their, their site visits, they stumbled upon a worker building cabinets and they did ask the applicant, he did say, yes, he was, and I believe that, that halted once he was told to stop. Can't vouch for that, but that's what we were told.
Well, I think one thing to note here is, it, there is no change in, in the actual zoning.
Right.
Obviously, they're, they're looking at, at the variances needed to operate within their current zoning and the, and the zoning is appropriate.
Other questions?
There
Turns from some people that have moved out there, but from my standpoint, nineteen eighty-one, somebody having a zoning for that long, um, obviously the new folks came to the zoning, zoning is not going to There is a little bit of concern there, but
And not to confuse the zoning with licensing, but in order for this, this applicant to have a cabinet shop, the building itself is not up to code that would be required for a cabinet shop operation, is that correct?
That is correct. There will be, have to be work to be done, but that is, that is building code that's already in place, that's not something this board has to vote on, that's, that's already in place. So if the zoning goes through, he would then have to go through the process of, uh, breaking the building, I believe, having a hydrant within five hundred feet, five hundred feet, so it'll require bringing a hydrant in and, and sprinkling the building, anything else. There's more work to be done, but prior to him doing that work, wants to see if he gets the variances.
Other comments? All favor signify by raising your right hand? All opposed? Motion carries four to one.
I make a motion to approve the request for a variance from section ninety dash one-three-five, signs and tax map zero-seven-eight-one-three-nine, to reduce the side and rear setbacks to zero feet for a freestanding sign.
Second.
This one, this is, um, off of Riverwatch Parkway, just past the intersection with Old Evans Road. Um, you have an apartment complex, Chanador Ridge Apartments. Our code requires that a sign, leave it right there, Patrice, that one's fine, you can leave it there.
Right there.
Can see, see.
Our current code requires that a sign be placed at least five foot off of the property line. Um, in this case, the property line juts back to the right of way mark you can see there. There's a sound wall, as you can see here, so anybody coming down Riverwatch Parkway, if they were to put five foot, the sign would actually start back here and extend this way. Can't see the sign. They're requesting a, a variance to have a zero-foot setback from the right of way line to put the proposed sign where you see there. Um, staff is fine with this, it, you can see it sits way back off the road to begin with, it, it doesn't have a sight distance issue, the, you can see where the stop bar and the stop sign is well beyond the sign, so staff is fine with the request.
Second. All favor raise your right hand? Carries.
I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash one-four-four, placement of buildings and structures for tax map zero-seven-eight-C-six-six-zero, in order to reduce the required setbacks to two feet from the rear and side, left side property lines and four feet from the right side property line to accommodate an accessory building, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July eighteenth planning commission report.
Second.
This is a variance to allow this, uh, building you see here to sit in the backyard. If you saw earlier, the backyard does kind of come down to a pie shape, does make it very tough to, to meet setbacks, requesting, applicant's requesting to have those setbacks down to allow that structure to sit in the backyard.
Question? All favor raise your right hand?
I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash five-three, list of lot and structure requirements for properly, property located at tax map zero-zero-one-A-one-one-six, to allow the new home to be built within a five-foot rear setback and eight-foot side setbacks, subject to the condition enumerated in the July eighteenth planning commission report.
Second.
Request again a variance to allow the house to sit right up at the property line. Um, the core has looked at this as well, they're happy with it, actually makes the situation a little better for them. Um, there is a, there is core property behind them, it's not another house, so staff is fine with this one as well.
The core agreed to something.
Yeah, they're, they were happy with it.
Not here, are they?
An inch over, though.
All favor, favor raise your right hand? Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve twenty-one Dodge Chargers from the state contract holders, Akins Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler, in the amount of five-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, in lieu of the twenty-one Chargers that were approved at the July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen commissioners meeting.
A second answer.
Briefly explain that.
Yes, sir, so, uh, we, we originally approved that the vehicles, they were approved as part of the budget. Uh, we went to place the order and Dodge could not fulfill our order, they did not have twenty-one Dodge Chargers. Some problem with transmissions for these cars or, or there was, it was an issue. Uh, so upon a little further investigation, we found out we could get the all-wheel-drive cars, the state has moved to all-wheel-drive, they feel like it's a better suited pursuit vehicle. Um, so, uh, the sheriff has agreed to go to the all-wheel-drives. It is an additional thirteen-hundred and about eighty dollars each car, uh, on the state contract, but it still comes in under our budgeted amount that we had, uh, for the twenty-one Chargers.
Question? All favor raise your right hand? Carries? Illegal matters?
Illegal matters.
Request for review by committee, I still don't know what that means. Public comment participation?
I'll tell.
Meet something, I'm sure it does. Uh, we have executive session items.
Chairman, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have four items that are property-related and I'd like to do them in the public forum, if that's a
I think that's a great idea.
All right, may I? I make a motion to approve eighty-one dollars to J. Tralls and K. Allen, parcel zero-seven-eight-B-zero-eight-two, to obtain right-of-way easement and/or property for the, for the Flowing Wells Water Line project.
Second. All favor raise your right hand? All right. Eighty-one.
May I?
Please, thank you.
I make a motion to approve forty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars to Jack S. and Sue Blue, parcel thirty, thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars to Christopher M. Jo, Johan, AKA C. Matthew and Barbara Johan, parcel seventy-nine, eleven thousand dollars to Thomas Szczesinski, parcel ninety-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars to Paul M. Davis, parcel one-twenty, nine thousand, eight hundred to Quat Fatan, parcel one-eight-seven, to obtain right-of-way easement and/or property for the Fury's Ferry Road Widening Project, TIA Project PI zero-zero-zero-eight-three-four-six.
Second. How many more?
Seventy-five.
Oh, my gosh.
All favor raise your right hand?
I make a motion to approve thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars to Cromer Maintenance Inc., parcel thirty-five-T, for Lewiston Road Widening Project, TIA Project zero-zero-zero-eight-three-five-zero relocation expense.
Second. How many more?
This, actually, with this project, we have a lot of them already purchased, these are the side of it, so the land purchases is acquired, now we're having to settle with the business that was operating on that land, so that's what this is, actually moving a business. We have three or four more of those to go.
All favor raise your right hand? Motion carries.
Last one for today, I make a motion to approve six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars to Michael Daniel Floyd, parcel thirty-six-T, for the Lewiston Road Widening Project, TIA Project zero-zero-zero-eight-three-five-zero relocation expense.
Second. All favor raise your right hand? Motion carries.
Mr. Schlotter, when do you, uh, foresee us getting started on?
We are actually, um, putting the contract together as we speak, staff's working on that, uh, DOT has requested that contract by the end of this month, so they can go through it, review it all, so we'll be out to bid fourth quarter this year, starting in January, toward February, taking trees down.
Next meeting is August the twentieth, right here? Any other motions to be made?
Chairman, a motion we adjourn.